Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call our November 19th Planning Commission meeting to order. And we'll go ahead and have our flag salute. And Commissioner Watson, would you do that for us, please?
Please stand, place your hand over, your right hand over your heart, salute if you're eligible. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to every public where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Hagel.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
We have one absence from Watts. And Chair Turley Trejo.
Here, thank you. Okay, do we have any public comments on non-adjourned items?
We have not.
Okay. I will go ahead and read our consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and submitted to Planning Commission at TemeculaCA.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Our first item on the consent calendar is to approve action minutes of October 15th, 2025, a month ago. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Watson and Hagel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't think I said aye, but aye, okay. And then we will move on to our public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to Planning Commission at TemeculaCA.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with a decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. All right.
So we have item number two is actually the Red Hawk item, so we don't need to flip the order.
Right, right, right. Okay, so, go ahead.
So on item number two, regarding an amendment to the Red Hawk specific plan, both Commissioner Turley Trejo and Commissioner Watson have a potential conflict of interest due to their proximity of their residence. They live within the Red Hawk community, so that creates a potential conflict of interest based on real property. Therefore, they're going to need to recuse themselves from participating in this matter given that Commissioner Watts is not here tonight. We do not have quorum for this item. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item tonight? The item is going to be continued to January 7th, 2026, but I wanted to see first if there's anyone who wanted to speak on this item tonight. So we can certainly, you're welcome to come back January 7th for when the matter's actually heard, or you'd want to speak today.
Do you think you're gonna do another session?
Excuse me?
Do you think you're gonna do another session?
It's going, it's not going to be heard tonight, so it's gonna come back on January 7th, 2026.
January 26th, you said?
2026, yes, next year, January 7th.
Yeah, I mean, whatever I did tonight probably does nothing matter to my parents, because I can just go over to 26.
It will go over to the January 27th, I'm sorry, January 7th, there will be a full hearing, a presentation by staff, by the staff, the applicant, and public comment.
Yeah, so.
Do you remember if you do this?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's gonna be continued to January 7th, January 7th, 2026. Yeah, you can speak tonight, it will, your comments will still be entered into the record, or you can come back January 7th. One thing I'd like to make very clear is January 7th, the meeting time is being moved to 10:00 AM.
January 7th, so, okay, I haven't, I think, that makes more sense, I'll come back January 7th, do you know when that is, or like?
Is your name David? Are you David?
Yeah.
Are you David?
I am.
Hi, David. Yes, it will be at 6, it actually will be at 10:00 AM on January 7th, right here.
10:00 AM, January 7th, 2026. What's the reason that it's not gonna be held tonight, that it's not gonna?
No.
No, we don't have quorum for tonight. There's not enough commissioners that can vote on the matter tonight.
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming, though, and please come back. We do want to hear what you have to say. Thank you. All right, thank you, David.
And we apologize for the inconvenience.
Again.
So we will go ahead and, just as a procedural matter, indicate on the record that this is going to be continued to January 7th, 2026. The public hearing is still open, so we do not need to renotice it. So January 7th, 2026, at 10:00 AM is when this matter will be heard.
Do we need to vote on that?
We can go ahead and make a motion on, just on the procedural matter of the continuance.
Okay.
A motion to continue this item to January 7th, 2026, at 10:00 AM.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All right.
Quick question, since it's 10:00 AM instead of 6:00 PM, does that need to be a renotice since you'll have residents not realizing the time change?
No, because we are continuing it to date certain, a time certain, which will be a regular meeting of the Planning Commission, so.
Okay.
We are welcome to always renotice. There's not a rule that you can't renotice if you'd like to, you can certainly do that, but you're not legally required to.
Okay, we have a motion by Fernando and a second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Motion carried. And we will go to item number three. And this was continued from the Planning Commission meeting of September 17th, 2025, and October 1st, 2025. Planning application number PA 25-0137, a modification application for the review and consideration by the Planning Commission of the as-built gray color scheme of 13 of Temecula Town Center's buildings. APNs 921, 320, 012, 018, 021, 038, 041, 042, 048, 052, 056. Hyman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So before I start with the presentation, I would like to remind the commission that some modifications to approved development plans are subject to the administrative approval process, which does not require a public hearing. These types of projects include modifications to existing buildings such as new windows and doors, additions, landscape changes, building paint, et cetera. However, per Temecula Code 17.03.010 note 2, for matters that are considered to have special significance or impact, the Director of Planning may refer such items to the Planning Commission for consideration. And because the applicant has been unwilling to make changes recommended by staff and by the, and the Planning Commission Subcommittee, this project is considered to be of this special significance since staff cannot make the findings to approve the proposed color So with the understanding that staff cannot make the findings for the proposed project, rather than a code-compliant redesign, the applicant elected to have the current unpermitted gray paint scheme presented before the Planning Commission for the board's consideration, even though solutions were previously offered by the Commercial Center Subcommittee. And I'll have more on the Commercial Center Subcommittee on later slides. But with that context, I do present PA 25-0137, a modification application for the unpermitted current color scheme on 13 of Temecula Town Center's buildings. So just a quick overview on the location. Temecula Town Center is approximately 50 acres in size. It's located on the northeast corner of Inez Road and the Rancho California Road intersection. And the commercial center contains office, retail, and restaurant uses. The red portion here highlights 13 of the buildings that are associated with the proposed color change. And before getting into project details, I wanted to show the evolution of the commercial center and what the commission has approved over the years. So planning first saw the development plan for this commercial center, approved in 1987, actually by the Riverside County Planning Division, and it was known as the Rancho California Town Center. So there's an image of what it looked like from 1987 to 2005. And then a 2005 Planning Commission approval of PA 24, or PA 04-0530. This was a modification application that incorporated new facades, steel grill decorations, grapevine medallions, and incorporated the warm earth tone colors that we see on now some of the buildings. In 2017, the Planning Commission approved PA 17-0167. This application now incorporated more modern Spanish designs. It was never implemented, and since it was never implemented, it does have an expired status. So overall, the center maintained the 2005 design until it was repainted with these gray tones we're talking about tonight. So I just wanted to show this progression, just for some context for the Planning Commission and some of the history of the center over the years. So conversation around the gray building started January 31st, 2023, when a complaint came through regarding the center's color change. Code enforcement staff called the property manager and advised them to stop painting immediately and to obtain a modification application to the planning department for review. So here again, highlighted in red are the buildings that are affected by the color change. You'll see there are 24 buildings, 13 of which were repainted in the gray tones that you see there, which include Dorian Gray, Dovetail, Wall Street, and some, in some areas, warm white. So before I get into what the gray buildings look like, I wanted to show the previous colors and the colors that we see throughout Temecula Town Center as it was approved in 2005. I'll get more into these colors on a later slide, but for now, as you can see, these primary, these colors primarily consist of warm tones and incorporates a variety of browns on the prominent facades and the tower elements. So again, that's the 2005 PC approval colors. And now here we look at the proposed colors that are up for discussion today. Again, as you can see, Dorian Gray and Dovetail were primarily used on the body of the buildings, Wall Street on the facades and tower elements, warm white on columns, cornices, medallions, and decorative metal. I'll go back and forth one more time here. So this is the 2005 PC approval, and this is the current unpermitted color before and Here we see the side-by-side of the previously approved colors and the proposed colors. On the left is a material and color package that was approved by the Planning Commission in 2005, and on the right are the unpermitted colors the applicant is intending to keep. The material board on the left contains warm tones which complement the Roman columns, Spanish tile roof, and prominent brickwork throughout the commercial center. And on the right are the gray tones, which again, staff can't support since the proposed gray tones are not compatible with the commercial center's overall aesthetic, nor is it, you know, in line with the applicable development code standards. So as mentioned earlier in the presentation, unable to support the project at an administrative level, staff did seek input from the Planning Commission Subcommittee. And so in response to the first color modification application submittal, which was PA 23-0066 on May 5th, 2023, planning staff, including myself, Scott Cooper, and Matt Peters, met onsite with the Commercial Center Subcommittee, which at the time consisted of Gary Watts and Linay Turley Trejo. The Subcommittee asked on this day about the history, enforcement, and compliance efforts, then subsequently provided staff with their opinions and direction. The Subcommittee affirmed that gray is not incompatible, nor is it an appropriate color for the center, and they requested that staff convey to the property owners that, number one, the owners should repaint the center to the last approved modification application. The second option was offered, which was that any of the color changes that are proposed should be in the quote-unquote "family of colors" of the previously approved 2005 modification application. And then another acceptable color alternative they would support would be an off-white color since it's a more congruent color that goes with the prominent brick, the columns, tile roof, et cetera, that you see throughout the center. So I just wanted to note that since staff was provided this directive, the message to the applicants has remained consistent, which was, again, number one, the gray is not a color that staff is supporting, and number two, simply pick one of these three options. And before I get into the project's inability to adhere to the general plan and municipal code, I just wanted to talk about how it is exactly that we got here, considering that this is a project that could have been administratively approved should they decide to go that route, and, you know, how in the course of almost three years, here we are now at the, at an escalated level of review with the Planning Commission. So don't try and read this timeline right now, since I'll be going over each item in the next slides, but I just wanted to showcase here some of the major milestones in communication and action that we've had with staff and the applicant and owner representatives. Just keep in mind also that this doesn't reflect all of staff's communication that we've had with, with the applicant. But it, it, like I said, I'll go into, into, in more detail later slides, but basically the message throughout this whole timeline has been that staff is letting them know, again, number one, gray doesn't meet the code, and secondly, they need to implement an option offered by the Subcommittee. So again, back in January 31st, 2023, code enforcement receives a complaint regarding the painting in progress. Same day, code enforcement calls Jennifer Lovelace, the property manager, to stop painting without proper approvals, and the painting continued. Code enforcement emails Jennifer Lovelace with previous color example approvals, and the painting continued. February 1st, Brandon emails, Brandon Rabidou, with code enforcement emails, your contractor should cease work until the appropriate planning approval is obtained, and the painting continued. It was by February 15th that the planning department receives the first modification application, PA 23-0066, with gray paint. Staff may, March 6th, issues a comment letter essentially stating gray is not supported, resubmit appropriate colors, and please note that the application was eventually canceled due to inactivity. March 10th, applicant conveys they are not reverting to previous colors, they're keeping the gray. March 14th, planning staff reiterates gray is not supported, please resubmit appropriate colors. May 3rd, staff receives design input via the onsite meeting with the PC Subcommittee, and the direction was then provided to the applicant. May 17th, owner representative requests an in-person meeting to discuss these building On May 20th, a meeting was set for May 24th, the applicant did not show up. Same day, I spoke and emailed the property manager and let them know that regardless of whether or not we're having a meeting, gray will not be supported per the codes, and they need to resubmit with appropriate colors. June 5th, 2023, Lovelace requests a meeting sometime after June 20th, when the owner is, will be available. Staff advises the property is still not in compliance and that regardless of, again, a meeting or not, gray will not be supported, they need to resubmit appropriate colors. June 20th, no updates, no meeting is set, staff is unable to reach property manager nor owners. And sometime in July, due to the lack of progress, planning department turns the case over to code enforcement and the city attorney. August 2nd, 2023, code enforcement reaches out to applicant requesting status, no response. As such, August 11th, 2023, the first civil penalty is issued to a dollar amount of $500. August 14th, code enforcement notifies Ms. Lovelace of the penalty, still no response. August 22nd, a $1,000 civil penalty was issued. August 28th, a $1,000 civil penalty was issued. September 6th, a cease and desist letter was provided to the management company by the city attorney. September 20th, staff issues a hard deadline to submit, or the case will be turned over again to code enforcement. And then you'll see a jump here from, in the timeline, from the end of September 2023 through October 2024, and this was mostly communication between planning staff and the property manager. In that timeframe, there was a lot of incomplete application attempts, staff questions, staff checking status, color arguments with an architect, lots of let me find out and get back to you from their end. And on the staff's side, there was also a lot of reiterating that gray is not supported, resubmit appropriate colors, resubmit one of the three options provided by the PC Subcommittee. So by October 18th, 2024, the second modification application was submitted, this was PA 24-0383, and it was submitted this time by an architect. The same gray colors were submitted, or proposed. And then between November 24th and the end of December, meetings between staff and city attorney, and on their end, owner reps and special counsel, we have a lot of discussions that took place to discuss paths forward, yet again, our message persisted, gray is not supported, resubmit appropriate colors. And after discussions with our city attorney, by January 28th, 2025, staff issues a comment letter for PA 24-0383 in writing, again, letting them know, not supported, you need to resubmit appropriate colors. And then by February 27th, staff at this point hasn't received any resubmittals, complete applications, or other project advancements, so the city initiates citations again and notifies our special councils that the issue would be resolved via lawsuit if the city doesn't have a submittal by March 2025. And in the meantime, the daily citations will ensue until comments are addressed or the PC Subcommittee recommendations are implemented. Continuing here with the timeline, as previously mentioned, now beginning March 2025, $1,000 civil penalty is issued. March 10th, $1,000 civil penalty issued. By March 11th, the architect informs us that he's removing himself from the project. As such, application was canceled. Citations continued. March 13th, $1,000 penalty. March 17th, $1,000 penalty. $18,000 penalty. $19,000 penalty. 20th, $1,000 penalty. March 21st, $1,000 penalty. March 24th, $1,000 penalty. March 25th, $1,000 penalty. March 26th, $1,000 penalty. March 31st, $1,000 penalty. By April 1st, 2025, the applicant notifies staff that they intend on pursuing gray buildings via a major mod review, with the understanding staff will recommend a denial of the project and with the understanding that we have an application now that will be presented and considered by the Planning Commission, the citations do stop. So by April 14th, the applicant submits third application, PA 25-0137, same gray colors are proposed. After subsequent review and communication, the project is scheduled for September 3rd, 2025, hearing. Day before the hearing, September 2nd, the applicant informs staff that the owner will not make the hearing and requests to reschedule. Staff reschedules for September 17th. September 17th, the applicant informs the, that the owner will not make the hearing again and requests a reschedule. Staff reschedules for October 1st, 2025. So October 1st, 2025, approximately one hour before the hearing, the applicant emails staff that they will not be attending the hearing. Instead, they emailed staff stating that they will be resubmitting plans that better aligns with the city's guidelines and expectations, and that they will be paying the fines that have been accrued by October 3rd. October 3rd, staff does not receive payment. Staff does not receive an acceptable resubmittal since it was a submittal that did not have one of the three options that had previously been offered. By October 20th, staff sends out a comment letter stating that their resubmittal is still not compatible with the options that were provided and that the project will be scheduled for a hearing, this time with or without property owner representation at the hearing. Citations ensued after that. A $1,000 civil penalty was issued October 20th, 2025. Then again, November 4th, 2025, $1,000 civil penalty issued. November 6th, $1,000 civil penalty issued. November 7th, $1,000. November 10th, $1,000. November 12th, $1,000. November 13th, $1,000. November 17th, $1,000. 18th, $1,000. And through the month of November, planning staff and the applicant continued to exchange emails relating to building colors, and over the course of the applicant's, or applications' history, no options were offered, but, by the, that were offered by the Planning Commission Subcommittee were ever submitted by the applicant. So nonetheless, we scheduled for Planning Commission to hear this item for consideration at their request. And so we'll get into why staff can't support the gray here, and part of it is because the general plan's committed design element, goal 2, design excellence, it promotes cohesive, high-quality visual aesthetics. Also, per Temecula Municipal Code Section 17.08.070B2, the commercial design standards, this code section promotes visual interest. This code section promotes visual interest and complementary colors, which colors that are consi- consistent color themes throughout a commercial center. Staff communication also has consistently affirmed that gray cannot be supported since the gray tones conflict with the warm-colored brick and the terracotta estile roofing, nor does it meet the intent of enhancing Temecula's image and neighborhood compatibility. Another concern we had was that painting thirteen out of the twenty-four buildings would create mismatching commercial center. So what was staff's recommendation? Implement one of the planning commission's subcommittee's options to make the project consistent with the general plan and the municipal code. So in other words, gray is not supported, resubmit appropriate colors. So other than planning staff, code enforcement attempted to reconcile and bring the site back into compliance. So this slide covers their communication and enforcement efforts. So again, initial contact made January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, where code enforcement advised the applicant to stop painting and to seek approvals immediately. They continued painting without an approved modification application, and after a lack of action resolution, code enforcement has issued multiple fines within timeframe of August eleven, twenty-twenty-three through November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Code enfor- enforcement issued a total of twenty-eight violations, eventually leading up to a thousand dollars per day, and whenever the deadlines were not met, and, and whenever there was inactivity or lack of communication from the applicant's end. In total, fines amounted to twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in penalties. No fines have been paid. As such, these fees have been sent to collections. So more on city staff communication on this slide, uh, we're highlighting planning department's communication, where staff consistently has reiterated that no findings can be made to support the gray palette, and that per the municipal code, proposed colors fall short since the colors are not complementary to the rest of the commercial center. We also iterated that the general plan underscores the need for compatible aesthetics. Staff constantly advised that the municipal code and general plan consistency can be made by adopting one of the three options that were provided by the subcommittee. And again, those three options are, number one, owners should repaint the center with the exact previously approved two thousand five modification application colors, or if changing colors, proposed colors should be quote, "in the family of colors," or the previously approved warm tones to match the rest of the center. Or option three, an acceptable color alternative that they would support would be an off-white color, and this was with the assumption that if they go with an off-white color, it would be for the whole center to essentially have all the buildings painted white. Planning staff communication continued on this slide. We advised that the project would move forward to the planning commission with the recommendation for denial. We can't make findings, we're making a recommendation for denial. And with this understanding, the applicant's decision was to be considered for review with the gray painted buildings before the planning commission at a public hearing. So that was their decision. It had also been communicated that on top of their citations, the applicant or owners are also responsible for costs incurred for all the rescheduling of their PC hearings. So from a sequoia standpoint, this project is exempt since sequoia does not apply to projects in which a public agency rejects or disapproves a project per section one five two seven zero. And staff acknowledges that the applicant's intent to preserve the current unpermitted colors as presented in PA twenty-five zero one three seven, but staff recommends a denial since staff concludes that the application cannot meet the standards outlined in both the general plan nor the municipal code, and that denial of this project means that the two thousand five planning commission approved colors are automatically applicable and must promptly be reapplied. That concludes staff's presentation. A material sample board sits behind you. Staff also would like to let, make you aware that we have reached out to the applicant for any confirmation as to whether or not they're here for, to answer any questions. We have not received an answer on that, so, um, staff is here to answer any questions.
Hi, May. Thank you so much for all that you've done on this application. Uh, so right now, any questions of Jaime or staff? I'll start down here with Fernando.
This very detailed presentation, so I don't, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Jaime.
Bob?
Since, um, two thousand and five, has there been any change in the permitted colors?
No, other than the unpermitted gray tones.
Right, so the, the colors that are offered are, are the same as it was in two thousand and five when it was painted at that time, right?
Uh, yes, for option one that we lined out is revert back to those previous colors. No modification application is required for that since it was already approved by the planning commission.
Okay. All right, I'm good for now.
Okay. Mark?
Yep, solid presentation. Super helpful, and I'll tell you why. I like the overview, but I also like it as you walk us down that step by step, you know, what do they say, how do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time, you know, and I really appreciate that. Lot easier to consume. Let me ask you this, of the twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, like, is that correct, the total assessed? How much of that ha- have they pa- have they paid, made any payment to reduce that?
No. To my knowledge and understanding, there has no, been no payment.
So there's a current balance, balance owing the city of twenty-seven five?
That's correct.
Okay. And then what was the lead of the, the date, rather, of last communication between you and the applicant, or, or, uh, Jamie?
Uh, Jaime, I think it was yesterday, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Can I ask what the nature of that was? Was that a one-way or was there an exchange?
Yeah, it was an exchange, essentially them proposing additional colors just via email and in conversation and in between submittals. It was, uh, colors that were not one of the three options that was provided by the PC subcommittee, so, you know, we let them know that that's not going to be accepted if that's what they intend to resubmit.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Any other questions of staff? Go ahead, Bob.
If they, if they painted the off-white, they would have to paint the thirteen buildings that have already been painted, and then how many additional buildings would have to be painted?
It would be all twenty-four buildings that need to be painted white. At least that's the assumption when we met with the planning commission subcommittee, so that we don't have white buildings next to warm-toned colored buildings.
Right, yeah.
It was assumed that they would go back, work with the other property owners or any other property managers that are, represent town center, and that they would all paint an off-white.
So there's eleven other buildings, how many other property owners?
There, this group owns thirteen of the twenty-four buildings.
Right.
And then we have a constellation of other property owners. So Vons, for example, owns their building, the gas station owns their building, um, so I would say there is at least, at least six or seven, to my knowledge, different property and to, owner entities.
Okay. So they would have to all agree to paint their buildings all at the same time and to paint the co- paint their building that color if the applicant was to accept that, that alternative?
Correct, and that's because at staff level, we want to make sure that whenever we have a project, we can actually make the findings to approve it. And so based on the guidelines and the prescriptions that we have in the municipal code and the general plan, that's how we meet those prescriptions.
So would it be upon the city's responsibility to request that the other owners paint their buildings and at what, what timeframe they have to, to paint it if that's was agreeable to the applicant?
If, based on their track record, they wanted to propose different colors.
Right.
Then we would need an application with all the signatures of all the property owners and probably a deadline, um, to submit this by.
Yeah, before any more painting is done, we would need an application submitted for all of the buildings in the center to address the colors.
Okay. So if they reverted back to the color that they had, the other owners would not have to do any painting at all, I would, I would ex- expect, right?
If they revert back to the colors and they're ma- they're all matching all the buildings, all the other buildings, um, eleven other buildings have the two thousand and five modification application colors. So if they go with, if we go with a denial tonight, they would by de facto have to go back to that set of colors.
All right, good. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have a question now. So because they painted their buildings, then the city's going to require for the other neighboring buildings to also match, or am I, or is it that this applicant has to match the original approval?
They painted without a modification application. Normally, if someone wants to paint, you, we can review it and approve it at administrative level within, you know, again, as long as we can make the findings and as long as we have colors that are matching, or if they're going to go with colors that are different and, you know, they at least pique visual interest. So in this case, if they were to go back to the previous colors, there would be no modification application, um, and...
But, but even then, I mean, we're not going to just let them paint, start painting. They still have to come back, get a permit to make sure that they're going to either go back to the original, and they're going to actually do what they say they're going to do, or if they want to come back with a different color, then they have to submit the application, right?
So you're correct. The preference of staff is to deny the project, so they have to go back to the oh-five, um, colors. We would, after tonight, we would automatically turn this over to the city attorney.
Got it.
Because given, as Jaime said, given their track record, we don't think they're going to go out there tomorrow and start painting.
Right.
So that's the preference.
Okay.
If, yeah, and, you know, in case we got to this point with what if this, what if that, um, if we could pull up my slide I have up right here, so these are your recommendation options right here. I'll read through it and we can ask questions if, if there are any afterwards. So the recommenda- if we recommend to rectify the paint scheme, then, or essentially to make it consistent with the general plan and the municipal code as advised by planning and the planning commission of the commercial center subcommittee, they have to pick one of the following three. Uh, so we can go with a denial, option one, which means they repaint the center per the modification application, PA twenty-four zero five three zero, no modification application is required, they must implement immediately. Option two, if we elect to redesign, they would need to propose colors that are in the family of colors. So these are the similar warm tones to the previously approved existing colors. Another redesign option, we'll call it option three, they can propose an off-white color scheme since it is more congruent color with the prominent brick and tile throughout the center. Again, that is with the assumption that they work with all the other property owners and they come in one uniform front with the white.
I get it.
So if you were to pick one of the redesigning options, so option two or three, then the revised planning application PA twenty-five zero one three seven, as specified by one of the enumerated recommendations and set forth by the subcommittee above, uh, when staff can make the findings of consistency with the development codes, the project can be brought back to the planning commission to review at a later hearing date. So if they elect to redesign, we would want to see a prompt resubmittal prefer, you know, within thirty days, um, and we're taking it to planning commission within the ninetieth day of the resubmittal. So that means that between day thirty and between day ninety, if there's any comments or any revisions that need to be done to prepare it for the planning commission, that it's done within that timeframe. So failure to resubmit within thirty days, and the matter will be turned over to legal for resolution. Failure to entitle one of these options, PC, uh, from the planning commission recommendations, option two or option three, within a hundred and twenty days, and the matter will be turned over to legal for resolution. So essentially, we're not having code enforcement being involved anymore.
Yeah. So normally, this would be just an admin approval. Planning commission would never see this. The only reason we're here is because the applicant requested to, a forum in front of the planning commission to defend their colors. We thought best-case scenario, there could be a negotiation that we could put these timeframes on, but without the applicant here, really, the only option is to deny. They're, they're not here to defend their application.
Okay. Any other questions of staff?
No questions for staff, for me.
We're good?
Yeah.
We're good? Thank you so much, Jaime. All right. Uh, do we have any, um, I don't see anybody. We have any, um, public comments?
We have none.
Okay, and since we do not have an applicant, I don't need to open the public hearing, correct? Since no one's here.
It, it's still open.
It is still open. I don't need to close it.
You, if there's no one here, you would close it.
Since there's no one here, I'm going to go ahead and close it. All right, we got to finally close that. That's awesome. Um, okay, so I'd like to have some discussion, just, um, I was on that subcommittee with Gary, and, um, I remember that day that we met, and there outside of where Spectrum is now, right there in that area, and I remember thinking when I was driving around and seeing all this gray, right? I was like, huh, we have gray now? Like, what's happening, right? And you can kind of, first of all, think, oh, well, that kind of modernizes it, you know, that might be okay. But then as we got to talking more with staff, it was like, they don't have permission to do this, and they have thirteen buildings, so there's eleven buildings that will not be gray. So then you have a conundrum, right? It's like you've got this mismatched town center. So we got to talking about it, and you know me, I'm a color girl, and the off-white sounded really good and a good way to modernize it and make it look nice and clean. And so that became a, a recommendation that we had as a subcommittee. Gary agreed, and so that was one of those, um, recommendations that were given to the applicant, to be able to do the off-white, and then hopefully all of the buildings would be eventually off-white and clean and modernized and look great, right? But none of that happened, as you can see. So that's kind of where, so this has been going on for three years, correct, Jaime? And we've been in on it for two years, so there you go. So, um, unless we have any more discussion on it, I think we're ready for a motion.
I just want to make a comment. I think this has been three years of just putting us off and delaying, total disrespect for the city.
Yeah.
I would hate to put any burden on any of the other property owners, so I would, I would recommend just flat-out denial and give Marcella something to do, so.
Cause she doesn't have anything to do. Um, comments?
O- only briefly, it, that, uh, words almost escaped me, the, uh, the nature of the body of this applicant's, uh, what I perceive to be blatant disrespect, this body, our function, this city, their obligations to it, uh, when I read through this litany of, of absentee behavior, um, uh, just chronic defiance, uh, and, and while I certainly don't... Uh, and, and while I certainly don't uh, present, pretend to know anything about the, the owner's finances. I, I am just astonished that none of those thousand dollar attention getters ha, have compelled them to uh, of course, I'm tight like two coats of paint, so I'm pretty cheap, you know? But I mean, I, I've been surprised by that, at, at very nearly thirty thousand dollars. And that hasn't brought them to the table. Which is why I certainly will be supporting Commissioner Hagel's motion for denial. Because I think the time for the, the continue, or to continue to extend these olive branches and, and be returned with uh, no communication or a slap, a figurative slap in the face. I, I think that, that time has, has now passed. So I'll certainly be supporting Commissioner Hagel's motion on this.
Did you make a motion? Well, let's not make one yet. We're not done discussing.
I'm sure. This is such an easy project. It's very simple. Change the colors. Gray's not the color here. That's it. So. I, if you'd like to make a motion, I can.
Uh, let me just say one more thing. So yeah, I totally agree. It's been really shocking, especially for them to cancel one hour before a meeting. And with all the time that staff has put into this and Jaime in particular, on this application, I, he and I have talked a lot and it's um. And I was reading again through the justification that the applicant put on the, on the paint scheme and it's um. There's just no consideration for anything um, for what is allowed. It's just, this is what we wanna do. And this is why we wanna do it. And we're gonna do it. And so um, that's unfortunate. And obviously the city has, um, staff has bent over backwards for this applicant. And beyond what we would really should do. And so I think we're ready for a motion. Go ahead. You, go ahead.
So I'd like to make a motion to deny application, uh, planning application number PA twenty-five dash zero one three seven.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Hagel and a second by Commissioner Watson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Motion, carry. Thank you Jaime for all your time on that. And everyone else who's helped him. Alright, we're gonna go ahead with Commissioner reports. I'll start over here with Mr. Watson. Do you have a report?
I have nothing to report out this session. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. And Bob?
Yesterday I attended the um, unveiling of the memorial for the three, well, two deputies and one, wasn't a sheriff. Back in nineteen oh-three, whatever they were then, that, that was killed in action.
Was Kent, do they have one for Kent Hennergard? Is he on there?
Yes, yeah. And it's, it's, if you wanna see it, it's on the front. It's outside, on the front of the Old Town Station. And also we all got a tour of the new part of the Old Town Station where um, it is now twice as big as it was. So we have um, two different units that are, that are headquartered there. And uh, it was very interesting because they didn't make a lot of changes to the, the new part. And it was the visitor center before. So the ceiling is all hot air balloons and everything and it's, it's. The, the deputies get a good kick out of, out of the decor in there. So um, it, it was very interesting to see. And I spent a lot of time talking to Sergeant Hernandez, who is stationed there and with the core team, which is the, the new part. And uh, he, he feels that they can, they can deploy much, much faster. Their, all their cars are parked out front there. Um, they get a call, they can be, you know, anywhere. Uh, since this is more or less the center of the city in, in a few minutes. So I thought that was a really good step forward for our, our police department, so.
Thank you.
No report.
No report. Okay, um, yeah, I wanted to go to that. I wasn't able to, so I'm glad you were able to do that. I, I'll go out there and look at that when it's daylight. So a couple of things, I was able to go to the Field of Honor in Murrieta on Veterans Day. If you guys have never been to that, it's amazing. And they have all of these flags there and they have local um. They have local people that have um, given the ultimate sacrifice. They have flags for them. And then it's just filled up with the field. And then this year, uh, they, they had a new part of it, which was really interesting to me. It was all of the flags that the United States has had, that have flown over this country from day one. And, and after every state was added. And really cool. So if you get a chance to do that next year. I was gonna say, take your kids, he won't be old enough to, but I loved seeing um. There was a young man there with his two kids and explaining everything, like explaining the flags and, you know, kind of questioning his kids on what they knew and. Um, I, anyway, it was a great thing and I actually wish we did something like that in Temecula, cause I think that's really cool. It's something that uh, honors those, that mil, the military, you know, that who have sacrificed everything. And uh, and it's a quiet, kind of reverent area. Uh, anyway, we've gone a couple of times, but I love going there. And I think it's good to support our fellow, you know, our city that's next to us also. And then I was also able to go to. The Puesca Mountain Day on Saturday night in the rain. And they did move it inside. But I, I've been to that before, but I, they showed a new film this time called The Temecula Massacre, which was really interesting. And sad. And then also they showed the mountain that weeps, again, about the whole saving the mountain. And it just reminded me again, you know, how grateful we should be that that did not happen. That we did not end up with a quarry right there across the freeway. And so if you get a chance to do that next year, it's always on November fifteenth. They don't change the date. That's the date. It's a national, not national. It's a city holiday um, to honor really Pachanga, who stepped in and bought the mountain. They bought the mountains so we didn't have to have a quarry. After everything that people had done and, and grassroots trying to get them to stop, it was crazy to watch it again and see the, the politics involved in it. But I'm so grateful that we still have that beautiful mountain and we don't have a quarry there. And grateful that our city takes the time to honor Pachanga with that every year. So that's all I got. That was kind of long, but it was great. Alright, do we have any Subcommittee reports? Nope. And Matt?
I have a few things to say tonight. Um, the first we talked about earlier is we have no items that are ready to go to Planning Commission in December. So December will be off. And we'll be, be back on January seventh. Um, and all of the meetings start at ten AM moving forward in twenty twenty-six. So mark your calendars. And Planning Commission meetings are normally the first and third Wednesday of each month. Moving forward, um, consistently, we're gonna be the first Wednesday. That third Wednesday maintained as a placeholder, but we're only gonna offer that in certain situations, requiring director's approval. If we have a timeline issue or something like that, we'll bring it on the third Wednesday. Otherwise, we're focusing on that first Wednesday of each month. At the January seventh meeting, um, we'll elect the new chair and vice chair moving forward for twenty twenty-six. We'll bring the Subcommittee list. So you might wanna think about the Subcommittee's you were on. Uh, we'll provide an update on the general plan update and the last GPAC meetings. And then the Red Hawk CUP will be back. So we'll get off on the right foot in, in January. The other thing I wanna say is just congra, congratulations to those of you who have been reappointed to the Planning Commission moving forward. Um, for Gary Watts, he will be missed. We'll miss his leadership and we wish him well, uh, moving forward. And I think Denise just set out some gifts. We're handing those out tonight because we don't have any meetings in December, but those are thank you gifts for the, uh, for the last year. You guys, uh, I actually jotted down a few of the projects you worked on. We worked on a lot this year. Um, and just some things I wanna make mention of, the home product reviews in Summers Bend and Alter, the Temecula Valley Hospital Master Plan, the Mercedes dealership. Gaucho Grill and the Habitat for Humanity Affordable Housing Project, just to name a few. The other thing I don't wanna mention is, let's see here, Stuart Fisk, this is his last Planning Commission meeting tonight. Stuart is retiring.
What? What?
So not only is, you know, it was the last supper tonight for Stuart, but uh, the last Planning Commission. So just a couple of things about Stuart. Um, he started in two thousand three as an assistant planner and then worked his way up, associate senior planner to planning manager. Um, again, he worked on a lot of big projects, the Old Town specific plan, the hospitals, several hotels, the auto dealers. And uh, we're gonna miss Stuart and his knowledge. So tomorrow, there'll be a party for Stuart, a going away party from two to four in the conference center if you wanna join us. And with that.
I just jump in real quick to say too, that it's been a, a journey that has passed by a lot quicker than I would have thought it would. Um, I mean, I've been here twenty-two and a half years. And um, in the beginning, it always felt like this was gonna be forever. And now I look back on it, I was like, wow, that was, that was a blink of an eye. And working with a variety of people um, on the Planning Commission over the years, um, Old Town Local Review Board, our city councils. Um, has all been a, a really positive experience. Lots of great people here as far as our staff. And the consultants from the outside that we've worked with to very professional groups of people all the way around. So um, I've been very lucky and uh, very happy to, who've made it here and um, spent my career here. So um, that includes all you guys too. So thank you.
Thank you, Stu.
Wow, I didn't know that. What are we gonna do without you? You have all this knowledge. Everybody kind of looks at Stu when they're not sure.
I always say if you're worried, you've always still got Eric Jones, so.
No, no, we're gonna, we are, we are gonna text Stuart.
You're gonna text Stuart in the meeting? Stuart, what about this?
I'll be there to answer right away.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your service, Stu, really. I, I've been here for a long time. And I have appreciated your knowledge and your um, wisdom and things that needed to be done. So thank you for all you have done. We'll miss you for sure. And I do wanna talk about Gary too, really quickly, that I'm glad he's doing better with his help and I wish he was here tonight. Especially since we don't have a meeting in December. But he has been a great voice for the Planning Commission and his wisdom. And he will be sorely missed, for sure. So um, and I've already told him that, but I wanted to say that publicly. Yeah?
I agree.
Thank you. Okay.
And I have one more announcement.
Oh, sorry.
Um, my last announcement is uh, the promotion of Scott Cooper to planning manager. So Scott will be filling uh, some big shoes. He'll be filling Stuart's shoes, so.
Alright. Alright Scott, now we gotta ask you all the questions. Well, those are big shoes to fill, but you will do great. You'll do great. You've had a lot of really hard projects this last year. So that's prepared you for this possibly, right? Anyway, congratulations. Alright, Ron, you're on.
So just a couple of things that we're just finding out about, as you may be aware, may not be aware. Uh, the county has been working on this project to put arches over Rancho California Road, heading out to wine country at Butterfield State Road. So these are gonna be big arches that kind of mimic our Old Town arches. But it's rather large. And there's gonna have to be a two-night closure on this coming Monday and Tuesday night. So Monday and Tuesday night, they're gonna close Rancho California Road, going out to wine country. It'll be reopened every morning at five AM. However, so traffic will be fine during the day.
What about Butterfield?
Butterfield, no. No effect to Butterfield. It's only Rancho California Road, heading out to wine country. So two night closures, Monday, Tuesday night.
And what are the times on that night closure?
Ten PM to five AM. So normally people aren't going out to wine country at night.
So when you do that, do you let the residents, cause that's county, right?
That's all county. That's all county.
So do we have that responsibility to let residents?
We'll, we'll send out a media, social media blast in conjunction with the county, but.
Okay.
They're doing their own outreach as well.
Oh, okay. Great.
So just wanted to make sure you guys were aware in case you saw something going on. And since we won't be meeting until January. During the month of December, there will be some intermittent enclosures of Rancho California Road on ramps by the Smart Freeway project that's going on right now. So they'll be communicated to this group, cause we don't have dates yet. It'll be communicated to you through Aaron's updates. So through the city manager updates. So just look out for those. It's unfortunate it's during holiday time, but we knew this project was gonna go on for a year and a half, two years. So we're gonna have to deal with some of that uh, discomfort in, around the holiday time. So there will be those as well.
And those will be during the day?
Those will be daytime closures. Because if you need to pave, we can't pave at night with these temper, with these temperatures.
Yeah.
So that will be. So.
But you don't know when those are yet.
We're working those dates out. We're trying to avoid Christmas. We're trying to avoid cer, certain dates.
Right.
But it'll be communicated through the city manager updates.
Okay.
But look out for those as well.
Thank you.
And it's been a great year. Thank you again for working with you. And publicly, I'd like to say the same, Ms. Gary. And we'll miss Stuart. So it's been great working with him over the years on, on the Planning Commission. So thank you very much.
Thanks Ron. Thanks for all you do and your public works and code enforcement. You've been busy with this applicant. Alright, um, okay. Any other comments? Anybody has?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay, then we will adjourn until twenty twenty-six, January seventh.
Merry Christmas everyone.
Oh yeah. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And yeah, we'll miss you guys. And thank you for the gifts.